...call this council meeting in order, so have full call.
Michelle.
Lloyd.
Mark Krantz.
Ben Keel.
City Administrator Kirk Johnson. Joseph and then for Andy, our city attorney. Joanne Frost, EDA. Justin Kanga, city engineer. Shandurik, our city maintenance supervisor. And Wendy Manson, our city clerk, who stands to pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of the which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have an open forum request. We go approval of the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second. Motion by Michelle, second by Mark to approve the agenda. Ben, I vote.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Michelle.
Aye.
Mark.
Aye.
Motion carried by over. Then we move on to approval of the consent agenda.
I have a question regarding the minutes. On page five. Letter E, number three, the Halloween house separated and Christmas house contest. It says in here that it's being held by the Parks Commission and information is on Facebook. That is incorrect, there is no information on Facebook.
So, did you put on Facebook or is that?
Correct. And then, under the open forum, the word about Melissa volunteering to do the short shortened synopsis of the city council meeting. It says on there that the council agreed in consensus, but I also recall that I had discussed it with Andy Corratt, that it would be done by city staff. Questioned him on what the legal ways of doing that was, so, under that, I did have an objection. I did agree to having the minutes posted, but posted by city staff. So, could we have that changed too?
Clarification on that, posted by city staff, but still turned in and submitted by Melissa.
I did not agree to that. I agreed to have it put.
Because they're not submitted by Melissa, we have city staff come on, then they're official minutes.
Right, that's why I did not want it done correct. I agreed to have it.
Melissa turns minutes in, city staff points them out, submitted by Melissa, and they're not official minutes.
Correct, I, that is correct. But my understanding is what I agreed to was, it was a good idea to have the minutes posted in a quicker fashion, but done by city staff.
So currently, you know, typically I do the minutes within a couple days, but I don't publish them because they aren't approved by the city council as the official minutes.
Correct.
So, what I could do, I suppose, is I could put draft, a direct, a draft and publish those if you like.
I believe.
But I don't pu, I don't usually publish them on Facebook, I publish them on.
On the city webpage. That would be my, me.
And so, what for you, Melissa?
Yeah, that's me.
Okay, so the minutes. When the line words says the city council agreed by consensus, I will remove.
Thank you.
Is that a free vote for everybody?
Anything else? We have a motion to approve consent agenda.
What do you approve?
Second.
Motion by Ben, second by Michelle. Mark, I vote.
Aye.
Michelle.
Aye.
Lloyd.
Aye.
Ben.
Aye.
Motion carried by over. Does that work?
Motion by Craig, two second at the bottom.
Correct, please. Okay, right county sheriff's department has reported. Reports and recommendations of city departments, consultant commissioners and committees.
The first one is correction to a resolution, I'm trying to find the page. The bond number is listed, on the original resolution is 2012, and it's the 2010 A bond, so, I'd appreciate if you would adopt this resolution with the correction. This resolution was adopted at the August or September 16th meeting. This allows us to levy an additional thirteen thousand four hundred and forty-eight dollars for Clementon Avenue. No, this is for 2012. But this does not increase the proposed level, this is kept, kept levying at the same amount, this just allows the city to levy an additional color for the figures.
Can I say something, Barb?
Yeah.
Actually, we have done this, we, the levy has stayed the same for a number of years for Cuny Mo 12. Last year, and last year it actually went down by twenty-five thousand, but the law changed, and now in order to be different than what it is in the bond, the original bond from years ago, you have to have a resolution. So, all this is, is doing the resolution to appease the state, basically. So, it's not changing what we've been levying for years.
And actually, this was already adopted, it just had.
Had the wrong number on it.
Had the wrong bond number.
Make a motion to adopt the resolution under the correct number 2010 A.
Yes, thank you.
Second.
Motion by Mark, second by Michelle to adopt the resolution 2010 A. Johnson, I vote.
Aye.
Ben.
Aye.
Mark.
Aye.
Michelle.
Aye.
Because the pack was prepared before the end of the muster, our council activity reports, unless, I mean, you're still welcome to report your activity, but there's no, there's nothing in the pack.
Well, I attended Bethlehem dinner and stuff like that, we had a great turn off with all the veterans from St. Cloud, it was really a nice bunch of people, a nice bunch of people to talk to, it was very fun and enjoyable.
The portion of the mindots, their kick in for WCAT, for the Wright County Area Transportation, if they kick in the maximum, it would be three million seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So, I broke into a swipe when I emailed her and asked her for the, for the full amount, and that means that if we would get that amount, and that should be finalized by our meeting, I think it's finalized already, and we'll find out what the, what the numbers are on, I believe it's the 18th of this month. But that means that the 12 cities, well, their next year buy-in, we will have to split between us like eight thousand five hundred dollars, which is.
Amazing.
Very manageable number.
Anybody else? Okay, let's move on to EDA and Preserve Montrose, Cuny Ditch, 38 assessment.
So, at our last meeting, the city council authorized making an offer on the Preserve of Montrose, spending up to a thousand dollars. Following that meeting, I received an email from the county attorney talking about the assessments against that property for Cuny Ditch 38. And that's when I emailed to the city council, suggested we just hold off the assessments. So, there's an email in your packet that shows us the assessed amount will be five thousand four seventy-eight fifty-six. So, the question is, do you want to pay that and continue on the purchase of the property or do you have a chance?
Either way, though, that's complicated.
Well, if we don't audit, it doesn't have to be paid by us.
Did you get anything back from them when you stated that we were gonna, we wanted to wait till after the public hearing?
That, yes, this is what they sent me.
Oh, okay.
This is, this will be the final assessment.
I was also reminded by Cuny Mo's that we really need to represent, us be there for this meeting.
Oh, it's fine.
Yeah. I feel personally that any, any decision that the council would make right now would be premature.
I mean, I know I'd like to see us move forward with it, because I mean, if we don't have any property to offer, we.
I hear what you're saying.
You know.
But at, at what point is it a step over the line, or don't you feel like it is? And until after the public meeting, we don't really know for sure if us are, right now we're just getting their estimates.
Well, I think if everything goes accordingly, this will be a cost, but it's changed.
Could we also use this situation to show light, you know?
Well, I think we would add this, this would be part of the light as well.
So, so as to get more consideration from Wright County.
Love the person.
Yeah, that's exactly. Developers are gonna think twice about this too, because of all the extra strings attached.
I don't know, I don't know how often they expect to leave attention.
That's what I'm looking at right now, Mark.
How long we got on this, Barb?
Well, they're kind of impatient with us, they would like to know our stance. The first letter I sent, we wanted to, it's left with the public hearing, now I've heard back from them a couple of different emails, and asking us for. I'm sure we're serious about it, but we don't, it's hard to come in when you don't know the absolute bottom line.
Roughly how many persons were up? Eighty or a hundred and ninety, do you remember?
Eighty-four, was it?
Eighty-six.
Eighty-six.
And that was, that was the parcels worth, it would have to be replatted as to, as far as.
If, if we want to do it, yes, but we could also put it on the number, whoever bought it, to head, go through those sorts of replating. I mean, still even at, you know, a hundred and eighty-six units at sixty-five hundred dollars, that means we're thirty-five dollars plan.
Well, with thirty-five dollars of plan as opposed to, I still feel that we can get it for two.
I mean, yeah, I'd like to see us come, come at it too, but.
If we could just make their endowments for another three weeks. Yeah, I couldn't update them, anybody that interested in that test.
Well, I think they want to put it on the market too.
Yeah. They want to get the books cleaned up.
Yeah, and, and I can, I can respect that wanting to have the books cleaned up and taken care of.
Now, if they put it on the market, they still wouldn't let us know first of all.
We had our chance.
We had our chance.
And we'd be, at that point, we'd.
Tomorrow, maybe change the preparation.
Well, I mean, I, I'd like to see us move forward with it. I mean, I don't, we, we talk about having areas for businesses to move in, we don't have any, and this is an opportunity.
Yeah, we're gonna hang on to it before we get developers to come in and look at it and see what they want to do. We'd be paying taxes on that right part after we bought it. Paying the taxes.
No, it's our, it's the city's property. This is pet flying.
Yeah, I know. I thought it was too cold for flies.
So, the question is that are you willing to pay the additional fifty-four seventy-eight? Or do you want to do that now, or do you want to ask them to wait until after the public hearing? And I don't know if they will, you know, but we can ask. Their response to my letter was, they said, please, the price.
Well, I'd say let's wait till after the public hearing, and then take it from there and see where we go.
If they're willing to do it.
If they're willing to go with it. How's everybody feel about that? I'd be very agree with that.
I'd like to watch.
Well, I don't, I don't know about that, because you're not, you know, so, so, right now, Barb, I understand what Barb is saying, is the, let's just say fifty-five hundred, then we still have to go to, Barb, we're still gonna go to Wright County and negotiate a, a price for those, but, well, I would say this would be an additional blight against the property, so I would go, I would start at a dollar and buy.
Yeah.
Still not to exceed a thousand, so then we're in for sixty-five. For how many acres about?
Fifty-four, fifty-four point two-two.
But were there some restrictions on that too? We could, we still have to have, put some homes on there and stuff, we couldn't just turn it into an investment.
Well, we have, if, if we chose to rezone it, we had, would have to go through those steps, but we couldn't sit on it and do nothing with it and sell it to an investor. But we couldn't make a profit on it. And then let the investor go through those steps and take care of that.
Yeah, because all we'll get back is what we got invested in.
Correct.
Oh, can we get Joanne, I'll show a little bit too, that we did have a five thousand dollar study done on this property, and we kind of came to the conclusion as an EDA that, that the smartest thing to do right now would be to land bait and then just shout the property around to developers that fit into what we would like to see out there.
Yes, I'd say that's a correct summary of the EDA meeting, with the additional finding that it did not appear that the townhouse units, the way it's currently planning, appears to be appropriate for the market today.
Correct.
So, summary planning would be required in order to reuse the property.
Yeah, I remember that the studies, townhouses and duplexes are just, townhouses especially are just, not for ten years, nobody's stepped into that.
We talked about town, median income, we talked about senior living, we talked about mixed uses, so we had a lot of conversation on the best use of the property.
Business up in front with, with the senior housing in the middle, and the single family house towards the rear.
Right.
So, what do you think, we should sit on it and vote on it? Would you want to do this? See if we benefit from it or not?
I mean.
Worst, worst case, you know, you want, Barb gets ahold of them and they indicate that they're not willing to wait, we would have to call a.
They'd have to call a special meeting.
Special meeting to then go for this. If they are willing to wait till after that, then we could.
Well, I mean, her response to the wait before was this letter here.
Yeah.
So, like, now you want us to put it on at sixty-five hundred?
Well, it'd be the, the fifty-five hundred due, and then up to the thousand dollars. So, I mean, we could end up at fifty-five, you know, five thousand five hundred one dollars, you know, maybe she could negotiate the fifty-four acres per dollar.
Right.
Because of this.
Worst case, it's sixty-five hundred.
Correct.
For fifty-four acres.
That would be.
Correct, we could, there, there was.
Or we turn around in a month, and at least we have some say on people that are coming to Montrose and saying, do you have any land for us? And we have to turn them over to these developers that aren't interested in selling the land because they think ten years from now it's gonna be worth a million dollars.
I would like to move forward with it.
One other question I have, you know, it's gonna be, what, nine hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars to look at, there's all that stuff. What if we get a developer that wants to build, but he doesn't want to take care of that, and just wants to make a, a section on the back, and it's gonna have to look for another developer? Because the city's not gonna, we're not gonna pay for that.
The fact is, really, they'll get the land virtually free, you know, because we would sell to them for the same price we paid. So, it would be the developer's responsibility to take care of her, of grading her utilities or whatever. There's sewer there, they still have to extend the water.
If we turn around and sell to a developer, then our hands are kind of tied in, and we got this problem, and there's no park there, now somebody wants to come in there, because it's privately owned, he wants so much money, people are not interested.
You're saying because of the, the, what's involved, what's involved to go up there and replat that?
Or even in our industrial park, we got help, there's a lot come in there, but the single guy owns it, he set some prices.
Right.
And he wants too much money, like you say, he figures maybe ten years from now it's gonna be worth a million.
Right.
Lloyd, you can speak in your right, please.
He's, he's not gonna be.
Joanne, would we be able to make that property look more profitable, profitable than, say, somebody else that has forty acres on the other side of town? Because of what we would initially have into it?
I think there would need to be some improvements to that front of the property, the removal of the burn, and some landscaping. Naturally, from an economic development standpoint, there's some benefits of having the property on the east side of town due to traffic cones and patterns, et cetera, but I think there are things that we could do, especially with the price, to make that desirable site, especially for doing multifamily housing or another housing.
As opposed to, as opposed to Montrose having assumed the cost to redo the burn and stuff like that out there, or are you thinking that we would probably have to do that to make it profitable too?
I think initially, we would try and market it to developers who can understand that would be their expense, because the price is low enough.
Is there a language you could put in a, an agreement, a purchase agreement or development agreement that has particular information about the cost of land and how much they can sell it for, and also put some restrictions, some has to be sold, this number of dollars per square foot you want to make? So, we are more competitive, because I think that's how we feel right now, is that the prices that are being offered by some of the developers are too high. And our hope was if we bought, if we got this property, it could be marketed at a lower per, per cost per foot, so, I don't know if that's, if we can do that legally, participating with our development agreements.
Yeah, I mean, those are things we, we should, I'll just talk about, those are things we'd have to look to, look into, there are always kind of conditions you can, you can look into with any agreement, but especially in real estate, you know, you start giving them, talking about different covenants and things like that, so, it's definitely a possibility, but without knowing exactly, you know, who you're gonna be working with, it's tough to really say, you know, exactly how you're gonna run that, but it's definitely something.
Joanne, in one of those other surveys that we took, where we were offering that, didn't a lot of those people come back and say, well, they'd be interested on the east side of town, but they were no, no interest whatsoever out there in west side?
That's correct, we had in contact with maybe half a dozen retail type businesses just to gauge the interest of the, the commercial market on that site, and most indicated that they would tend to offer a site on the east side of the community. So, I think that's why we proceeded with the housing study, to see if that site would be marketable for various housing types. The housing study did indicate that they thought housing outside of towns were needed in the community, and given that, if we had that housing developed, there might be a potential force on commercial that could support that adjacent to Highway 12.
Now, Joanne, on that parcel of land with this acreage and stuff like this, and if we did purchase it and everything, and if we did get a lot of rain like we did that one year, would we be liable for water damage to the building to the west of that, where that land sits?
I'm not sure if that's a question for me or for a customer or one of us.
Yeah.
Again, some comments by saying, I, you know, the development was designed and constructed to meet all the city stormwater requirements and all the MPA requirements. So, we're, the development, you know, after something is constructed there, after a building is constructed, is gonna, is gonna release stormwater at a rate less than what it did previously before any development. So, based on that, I don't see how the city could be on the block for something like that.
Well, council, what do you think?
Well, I mean, I'd like to make a motion to approve to, approve this with the assessment of the five thousand four hundred and seventy-eight dollars and fifty-six cents with the, and then going into talks with them, Barb, to negotiate a purchase price not to exceed a thousand dollars for the fifty-four acres.
I'll second that. Motion by Ben, second by Mark, purchase this, going to the park, making an offer. Thousand dollars. Mark, I vote.
Aye.
Ben.
Aye.
Lloyd.
No.
Michelle.
No.
And I vote no on that too, because I don't want the city to get wrong. Motion failed three to. Okay, and we move on to planning and building for Emery Truck and Trailer Repair.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, today I'd like to welcome a new business that is requesting to move into the community, Emery's Truck and Trailer Repair Service. With us tonight are Justin Emery and Kimberly Johnson, also the property owner, John Donahue. They are requesting permission for a conditional use permit to operate a truck and trailer repair service over the property located at six oh one Nelson Boulevard. And if you recall, a couple months ago, we approved a conditional use permit for this site for a hardware farm supply store. Tonight, we are requesting permission or approval to amend the condition.
Tonight, we are requesting permission or approval to amend the conditional use permit for the outdoor sales and farm supply store to include truck and trailer repair. The planning commission met earlier this evening and conducted a public hearing. As part of that, they are requesting conditional approval of the request. This would allow up to four truck and trailers on site at any time. Two that would be in the rear sixteen hundred square feet of that facility, two indoor and up to two outdoor. In closing, you've had it on pages sixteen to seventeen, is a copy of a resolution that was brought before the planning commission. As you see, there are fifteen conditions that are included as a further approval. An amendment was requested to item number eight by the planning commission. That is, in order to minimize the impact on the adjacent residential property, perimeter landscaping should be installed as well as landscaping adjacent to the building. The planning commission also suggested that the existing fence that is along the north perimeter of the property be repaired by June of two thousand and fifteen. So we'd request that that item be amended to note fence repair by June thirty, two thousand and fifteen. And then also we add some comments from adjacent property owners to the north requesting that some cement barriers be removed from the site as they feel would improve aesthetics from the residential property. So we'd request that that be included as well. In addition, item number nine includes, item again regarding a cross-access agreement with the property to the west. After this packet went out, we did find a document recorded with Wright County Recorder's Office that lands the city a thirty-foot access easement on the west side of that property in question. So we can strike number nine from the resolution. So with that, the planning commission is recommending approval of the request.
So I'll make a motion to adopt resolution number twenty fourteen dash nineteen.
I'll second that.
Yes. It's a mandatory condition from the original.
Lloyd, what do you vote?
Mr. Mayor, before you vote, could I make one additional slight amendment with my apologies? To number eight, the language on that first sentence regarding the perimeter landscaping rather than what should, can we amend that to say shall? That's all, thank you.
Lloyd, what do you vote?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
I vote aye, motion carried, I vote.
Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Yes, welcome to the community.
Can we move on to public work, proposal for installing heat for the storage shed for the trucks?
We have comprehensive plan amendment first. Inside of each third one.
Comprehensive, okay, sorry. Comprehensive plan amendment, resolution coming fourteen dash eighteen.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, again, earlier this evening, the planning commission met and conducted a public hearing on a request amendment to the two thousand and two comprehensive plan, which was last updated in two thousand and six. The comprehensive plan amendment is to amend our ultimate land use plan map to change three parcels that are along County Road twelve. They are the parcel, two of the parcels are acreages that the city acquired through tax forfeiture. They are currently guided as highly commercial. And the intent of the city when we acquired those is to have them as a regional park. So the request tonight is to re-guide those as institutional, which would allow a park as a permitted use. In addition, there is a third parcel that's just over two acres that is surrounded by that park land. That small parcel is also currently guided highway commercial. The planning commission felt that would be the highest and best use of that land would be low-density residential, which is consistent with adjacent properties. So tonight, we are amending the comp plan's ultimate land use map to re-guide two parcels from highway commercial to institutional and then that third parcel to low-density residential. In addition, the development framework for Plan District One, in which these parcels lie, the text would be amended to address this use as institutional in nature. And then in our future park development framework on page sixty-nine of the comp plan, we would also include language regarding the larger community park that is planned to address the active recreational needs of the community, which may include but not be limited to ball fields, et cetera. So three small amendments to comp plan. And the planning commission unanimously recommended approval of those amendments. And subsequent to this, if you approve it, on the next meeting, we would have an ordinance that would come before you actually rezoning those two parcels to institutional park.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution amending the twenty-two thousand and two, two thousand and sixteen comprehensive plan to, for, and resolution number twenty fourteen dash eighteen.
Second.
Motion by Ben, second by Mark, approve resolution twenty fourteen dash fifteen. Johnson, I vote.
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
I vote aye, motion carried, I vote.
Thank you.
Okay, now we'll move on to the public work, proposal for installing heat for a storage shed.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council, before you tonight of page forty-one, forty-two, and forty-three in your packet is a proposal for installing heat in our shed, the wastewater plant that we use to store our large equipment and various other items in the public works department. Brief history of that building was built in two thousand and eight with the intention of, when it was built, to go to cold storage with the goal to phase it in to become a repair shop down the road. And we are in the sixth year, I guess, now that it's been, since it's been put up. And we're looking at going into the phase where we can start putting heat in there and using that as a repair shop. When it was built, this cold storage, under code, going to the heating phase, the code changes for occupancy, which requires power ventilation for when we have workers working in there. So that is part of the proposal also to make. We received two bids. Very diligently searched for two bids, had one bid for quite some time, and had a second bidder come on board last week. We've got two bids, one from Dolan Sheet Metal and Heating out of Clear Lake, Minnesota, and the other one of Bowman Heating from Buffalo. Both bids were real close to each other, eight hundred and ten dollars separate the proposed, proposed work. And recommending that council approve the cheaper of the two for Dolan Sheet Metal in the total of fifteen thousand, five hundred dollars.
Are both of these pretty consistent, same equipment, both of them?
They're identical bids. Other than the name brands of the heaters, but they're all equivalent BTUs, right down to just about identical. The gas service was run a couple weeks ago by XL Energy. When we did that phase of the project, XL required us to put twenty-one hundred dollars down to bid on our, to proceed with the project. And last week, we got a bit of good news on that, they're returning our check because the job didn't require as much work as we thought it did. So we're getting that money back.
Now, if we pass on this, how quick will we get started on something like this?
We will start tomorrow.
Well, I make a motion of the approved Dolan Sheet Metal and Heating out of Clear Lake.
Second, discussion. Second, though.
I'll second.
Sean, question, completion?
I would say the heater will be ordered tomorrow, two weeks for delivery, and ventilation portion of it will probably be a month before completion.
Okay. So early December?
Correct.
So we'll have heat and everything going on our way?
Soon as possible. I know the weather's supposed to be steady downhill slightly from tomorrow on, so as soon as possible.
So, budgeted funds?
Budgeted funds, everything's fully funded. Nice career to go.
Any other discussion?
And right now the building is actually equipped to, like, maintain all the trucks, you know, cleaning up and.
Yep, we, we have some iron plumbing that we need to do in the corner for some water requirements, but that's just minor stuff that we can piece together at when it's needed.
Did we need any additional insulation that keeps the cost clean?
Two years ago, three years ago, we spent close to forty thousand dollars insulating, containing the inside of that shed. The ceiling is roughly an R fifty, and the walls are R twenty-five-ish. So we're more than capable of handling the heat that's in there. The only thing that is going to be the major heat loss is when we kick that power ventilation on, it's going to suck the heat right out. But that's required by code, so there's nothing I can do about that.
Don't open the door.
That's right.
Any other questions?
Okay, I motion, Michelle seconded, and what do you vote?
Aye.
Lloyd?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
I vote aye, motion carried, I vote.
Thank you.
And we'll move on to private roads, snow removal.
At our last council meeting, we discussed private road in Rockville. And I spoke to one of the major property owners, and this was now probably a week ago, two weeks ago. And he still had not proceeded with our last discussion, which was he was going to report with H O A. Still had not done that. I told him, we would be sending the letter, and we would not be following his, or the private road this year. And he said, well, please send the letter. I asked him, can you please provide the legal letter? And that's what in the end happened. So what I'm looking for is your authorization to put that letter to the private owners of the Rockville private companies. Do you want to change the letter, Lloyd, you're certainly welcome to.
The only thing I have on it is, we don't like to see it, but I can make it look, yeah?
Why?
And I'd like to see someone put in nearby when they're pushing the snow that they're pushing it on other people's property. I was out there talking to people on Sunday and that stuff, they come across, and they were pushing it across the road over on this guy's property in the corner, damaging his fence, so I told them to get it signed and put up private property. And one other sign, call the cops if they're pushing it over there, damaging his property. And they should plow it to the east and then push it down that, down the end, where the city pushes it while it's.
Although, Leonard says that the city will coordinate with all contractors during the snowfall. We work that coordination into where we would suggest that they push their snow?
Sean?
I don't know where the city can tell private property where, where they can put their snow. Well, to the extent that. Well, you wouldn't want it on the city street, then you guys would have to, but if they pushed it down to the east, their, that end is down on the end there, then they can push it down.
They can certainly put it there, it's more enough room for everybody. But I don't know if I have the legal authority to tell them where to put it, is what I'm trying to say.
Well, to the extent that it's.
We can suggest.
If they're damaging somebody's property, they'll get themselves a, you know, citation visit from the sheriff, so I think it's pretty quick if that's the issue. I mean, I, I know what Sean's saying, but, you know, I think they're going to look at it and understand that there's, if there's not a place to put it, the city's opening up and saying, push it down towards the east, towards, the city's got plenty of room. I think, I think that's the right step in the right direction, but if Sean's right, the weather's going downhill, starting tomorrow, I think this letter is going pretty quick.
We can just recommend that they move the snow to the east, you know?
Or haul it off.
Or what?
Or haul it off, period.
Say, we want to make the.
Add that bit to the letter done as far as the coordination to the east, or haul it out?
Yep.
With that, with those additions that I made, a motion to, I'll throw this, Mark, to go ahead and send a letter to the residents.
I'll second.
Motion by Mark, second by Michelle, I vote aye, send a letter to the residents in Rockville. Mark, what do you vote?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
I vote aye, motion carried, I vote.
Question, Barbara, are we gonna, are we going to address any other private owners?
I need to have, I think we need to meet with Andy about any other questions?
So his feelings are pretty clear about liability issues. There are some others that we need to deal with.
There is one other. I will shoot him an email tomorrow and ask him.
Okay, and we'll move on to the code of conduct ordinance.
So this, I think, is the red line. And you made a change, you asked. One of the things that you wanted was the, the no say, but that's not legal. Because it's not legal. Because as an elected official, even if, even if you're in hot water for something else, you still have the right to voice your point of view and vote accordingly at the council. Otherwise, it is exactly as the City Council asked, and I would encourage you to adopt it. It is ordinance number two thousand and fourteen dash zero three. It is ordinance number two thousand fourteen dash zero three. I make a motion to approve the drafted protocol of the Orleans twenty fourteen dash zero three as amended by Andy.
I'll second that.
Motion by Michelle, second by Ben, for the ordinance twenty fourteen dash three. Mark, I vote.
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Lloyd?
No.
Michelle?
Aye.
No vote, no on that, motion Gary three two. Okay, November seventeenth, budget meeting time.
That's just the way I need to know what time to want to start the meeting, it's, we're gonna hold it at the city hall, it's a work session, you know. Firstly, I'd love to meet as soon as everybody's available, you know, sooner rather than later. Five, five thirty, four thirty, six? But they're really, I heard you said.
It's two weeks from tonight.
We, I would like to be able to invite the newly elected council members to. Well, I don't know if they can be there before, during the work day, depending.
Five o'clock.
Five o'clock. If you're, if it's reasonable, but suppose you're hungry then.
Only a hoagie of a week.
Very healthy. Five P M, is that a reason?
It's okay with us, I don't know about the.
Five o'clock, please. Everybody three and five?
Yep.
At city hall. And I'd like to hold it at city hall just because we have all of our documents there, so if we want to research something, you go with, you might have to take the room to grab it. Thank you.
We don't need a motion on that.
Oh, I got it, five o'clock, that's it.
All right, and Rock Brook West Drainage, um, update on access.
Uh, Mayor Council, uh, an update from uh, earlier this summer. You had requested that I contact the property owner off of Seventh Street at three oh one Seventh Street South. He would be the first property owner that we would need to get an easement from, or somebody we need to get an easement from to get access to the properties behind the pond back there. Um, after we talked during that meeting, I made several attempts to contact, uh, Mr. Dan Greenhagen. We traded voicemails back and forth, I believe, once each, and then I left, I believe it was three voicemails for him, and he, he didn't call me back. So I sort of dropped it at that, assuming that he probably wasn't interested in talking to me about the property issue. Uh, I did make one final attempt to contacting him last week, and he did answer my call. Um, I briefly discussed the, the items that has been discussed previously, council regarding the pond access back there and, and against our vice neighbors there. He didn't uh, he didn't sound real interested in, in any sort of easement. He did ask me right away, who would do the work and who would pay for easement, or how much would you pay for, for an easement? Um, and I encouraged him to at least meet with me on site so I could show him what the issues are and talk through those issues with him. And he did agree to meet me on site on, on Friday, November seventh at five o'clock, which is what he had proposed, so. So I do have a meeting set up with him on site, I know he's been asking me about probably the same questions and quite honestly, I just told him that, um, you know, public works with, the amount of work that need, that is needed to flatten the area out, to get a mower or some small utility vehicle back there is not a lot. What I would call, I guess, minor grading and, and clear brush, brush work. So I told him that probably public works with staff, the city staff would do that. And that's where I left that, so.
Just assuming you say that that's an improvement to that property?
Hmm, it's behind his fence, his, he's a, his backyard is fenced off.
Yeah.
And the area that we're talking about is outside of the fenced area, it's in the drainage utility easement area. I don't, I, I guess I wouldn't necessarily say, could probably argue it as an improvement. It's all in the eye of the bull there, I think.
I'm just trying to think of the negotiation process, huh? You know, if we could, if we could state that we are improving this property, at least on the outside of the fence there, taking with a brush and a small bend and like making it possible for there, the easement there.
Right.
Does he have that much room there, or would that be connected with seven oh one or whatever is on the corner?
No, uh, seven oh one, the one on the corner there, it would be on the other side of the pond there, so. Yeah, there's more room there than.
Isn't, isn't his landroom quite a bit, just about up against that, where that fence is?
Um.
Doesn't that property run that far back?
Three oh one Seventh Street property line goes all the way up to like, I believe it's the, the culvert approximately.
Oh, okay.
Kind of goes, goes into the, actually into the pond, I believe. If that answers your question?
You know, I, I know we've taken this always from the, from the beginning, you know, to start looking at it to make sure that this pond is designed, um, you know, to, to the letter that it was supposed to be when originally created and to the extent, you know, within, within reason from when it was originally constructed, the correct size, volume, I mean, how much more does the city have invested interest in creating this easement? I mean, is there, i- is the same, is the city itself gained from creating this easement?
The city's not gonna, not, it's just gonna be the owners to be able to get that here.
Okay, okay. So, I mean, at this point, I think it, it would be better to hand this off, to give you this information that we have done, handing this off to the homeowners and letting them take care of this, because I mean, a- at this point now, it's, it's really not a city issue anymore. The pond is the size that it should be, it is the shape that it should be, and does do the intentions that it's supposed to do. So I mean, should we as, as councils still be allowing taxpayer monies to go farther forward with this?
There are, yes, there are considerations as to the easement process, uh, there's gonna be uh, legal expenses as far as the, the easement, drawing it up and getting that signed, there is going to be expenses as far as if we have to bring in fill or even bringing our equipment, city equipment to, to maintain that.
Yep.
But now that, if the door has been opened, I agree that there should be a process where that homeowner and the homeowners that are affected, seven oh five, seven oh seven, seven oh nine, that they are also in the process because they're, if the city could pass off that expense to them and they want to pursue that, I, I, you know, as long as that avenue is now made up and up.
Yep.
I would like to see it go that way also because, um, to have more, because how much money we spent on this, just re, uh, surveying that, that pond, but you know, at this point, you don't have to go on with.
Between the west pond and the east pond in Rock Brook, we have spent over ten thousand dollars this year.
Just to make sure that it's as it should be.
Yep, between the two sides, the east side and the west side.
I have, uh, yeah, seven thousand four hundred and eighty-eight dollars and seven thousand three hundred and twenty-three dollars. I mean, I think at, at this point, it's to the point that they're done correctly and the city, you know, i- it's, it's not of interest to spending taxpayer dollars on. I think that if, you know, you know, we've got, we've got the information that's done correctly, we've started, started the communications. If seven oh five, seven oh seven, and seven oh nine want to take and run with it from there to get, to continue with the easement and knowing what's going, what there is, I mean, we've done a lot of the legwork, creating this, getting it going, that they should be the ones, you know, finishing this off. Because at, at this point then, it would be taxpayer dollars, I mean, that aren't gonna benefit, I mean, it's, it's gonna benefit three taxpayers.
I could do, I'm trying to think through the process of, in short notice, you know, we've got a week, less than a week.
Friday.
Before this meeting.
Mm-hmm.
To pass this off, or even knowing if anybody other than like Pat is available. And would it still be beneficial to, as like a city leads on the head, Justin, he doesn't need initial contact?
I mean, I, I'd be open to that, I mean, it's just, I just look at, you know, we've spent a lot of dollars into this. Ponds are what they are, you know? And I don't see where continuing down this is beneficial to the taxpayers as a majority.
Well, that pond ain't gonna change because you got water running in out of the storm fields out there and everything. I don't think that's fair to the property owners that have water in front of them. To that property game and raising the banks that they can't use their back property for anything when we get a lot of rain.
I'm not following there, but.
Well, you've got drain tile coming in out of.
Yep.
That runs back into that pond back there.
Yes.
Well, you get a lot of rain and stuff like that, it comes up quite a ways on the back ponds out there, on them places out there.
And it does undermine your.
Backyard and the pond races.
Yep.
So, they ain't benefiting nothing by anything with that water coming out of them fields, draining that pond, that pond and making that pond higher. And the culvert is high that the water can't run down and keep that pond lower.
During our investigation, the pond is in the guideline, it follows the guidelines that was set.
Yep, that pond's about twelve feet deeper there, and I thought the pond ain't supposed to be that deep out there.
The, from our discussion with Justin, the ponds were supposed to be a minimum of three and a half or four feet deep, Justin?
F D C A, sorry, F D C A guidance is a minimum of three feet and we design to a minimum of four feet, the council's additional settlement. That's a minimum depth. We, then they're, they're deeper than that very frequently based upon the design volume, the second criteria that we reviewed previously. There's two criteria, there's a water quality volume criteria, that the dead storage volume has to be designed to so that the amount of permanent water that's in the, in the pond at any given time has to be a certain volume, so many cubic feet. So, if you go four foot depth, you have to go a much bigger footprint, if you go ten feet deep, it's a smaller footprint. And so, those are variances that you have in your design, and that's the way the developers engineer designed it, and it meets all of the city development standards and the M P C development standards.
Cause I think I got about that same problem out there in Fessin Hills though, we just, with the water high, and it's gotta be, should be a new culvert put in out that way so that pond gets lower.
Wait a minute, Mr. Mayor, we're, we're doing one thing.
I know, you only one thing.
Establish the fact that, that the, the Rock Brook, the survey shows that, I mean, even the, the outlet was what, within a half inch?
It was, all that was surveyed and it was very, very close to the original design elevation, I'm correct?
Well, I guess they're just gonna have to deal with the farmer that owned the property with the drain tile running into that pond and see what happens with that.
One other thing I'll say, when you talk about taxpayers' money, here regardless of whatever we do, it's never gonna profit or be a foundation to every taxpayer there is. I mean, if you put a new city street in this side of town, well, those are gonna be ones that profit from it, we're still gonna pay for it.
Well, I'm, I'm, you're, you're correct, but if we put a new city street out here, you can still at least drive down, correct?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, I, I'm just saying, you know, the amount of money that's being put in here, there's, there is a potential for me to benefit from it. I can't drive down there, I would still be trespassing, you know?
The, the thing with the pond is, is that we did establish, I think everybody would agree, maybe not, we'll find that out right now, that, that it is the way it was designed after it's been surveyed. At least that's my understanding.
Was there ever a, a design made of that before it was actually built or put there?
Yes, there was, the developers engineered it, did a full design, did all the calculations for the pond, so they showed. I've developed a great plan, we reviewed that in some of our workshops. That's what I used to compare the survey as well, today's conditions out there, I compared it to, to that.
Next time you come to city hall, I've got a map from, an aerial map from nineteen ninety-four that shows that property and the woodland that was there before it was developed.
Technically then, the builder shouldn't have been able to build it.
Well, thinking at all the M P C A requirements.
Justin, would you, would you be willing to take, I know you kept this meeting set up, would you be willing to take, um, the interest of property owners with you or representative of them and maybe, I don't know, I think probably the city council should probably be there too? With that, with you, that you?
Sure, absolutely.
I didn't commit because I thought it was last Friday, I didn't realize it was this Friday.
Yeah, I mean, I, I sort of explained on the phone to him, you know, sort of what the issues were, but you know, I mean, and outside of the fence, I, I was hopeful that maybe he would be okay with it, you know, it's in an area where he doesn't use really. But he was concerned about, I think he was concerned about liability, people crossing his property, things of that nature. It's understandable, but you know, maybe that's something that can be worked out with him, maybe it can, maybe it can, he sounded like he was looking for some, some funds as well.
I guess the next question is, uh, Pat, would you approve, be willing to?
I own, yep.
Can you make that mean?
Yes.
Yeah.
Whoever's south of five?
Would you, would you be comfortable representing, um, your neighbors?
I'll talk with the neighbors, see if they want to also attend.
We want to be careful about that too, you don't want to gain up on the guy, you know, lonesome baki. Well, there's, there's, what hasn't been established here is there's more than just three property owners. There's property owners all the way from Baki at seven oh three, all the way up to Andy, which is seven fifty.
Seven fifty, that seems, and it goes beyond that too.
And if, if I can say, we've been around and around and around this for two years. This started back in the spring, now we're in fall, going into winter. We've discussed this, yes, we've agreed the pond is the minimum height, or there is a minimum, which was quite a bit higher when all the surveying was done and everything. However, being at this pond and to revisit this again.
However, being at this pond and to revisit this again, because evidently I'm understanding some people, but even with this pond at the minimum, when this development was designed and the lots were sold and it was approved by E D A, council, contractors, Wright County, we still got numerous properties there that have no access to a third of the property that they own and they're paying taxes on. All we've asked, and this was also discussed, if I can refresh everybody, this access would not only benefit myself, my two neighbors to the south, and neighbors to the north of me to access the back of their property and we'd sign off on it in agreement, yeah, you can cross mine, on and on and on. It would also benefit Public Works or anybody else that needed to get back in there for any type of service. We've got manholes and Sean has brought this up, we've got manholes that, he's got equipment, they can't reach it now. So by benefiting and going across with some type of a pathway there, it, it'd be more to benefit just three homeowners as being stated during the meeting.
So in the utility and drain, this is a utility drainage easement that they're talking about. Can you change that to a different type of, because that's not what a drainage and utility easement isn't really for, a trail associated?
Well, Barb, what I'm trying to say is we're paying taxes, we're paying taxes on this property.
Oh, I understand that.
And the access. So somebody screwed up down the line, that's all I'm gonna say. Somebody screwed up and all we're trying to get is justification as to why we don't have a legal access to a property.
I'm just asking if we can change the type of easement it is to a?
Easement's gonna depend, it's essentially, I think this gentleman stated it pretty accurately, it's, it's an agreement that you're gonna reach for a specific use. So if the use stated has to do with utilities, that's gonna be pretty restrictive as to who can be a party to it. So it's gonna depend, the answer, long, short answer in a long way is, is gonna depend on what the state approves. It's very stated, very narrow, if you're, if he's, if this gentleman's gonna grant easement on his property for a specific use, that's gonna determine who's gonna be a party to it. You can't imagine there's any homeowners who are gonna have, i- if it's a matter of getting equipment for Public Works or they're not gonna have much of a use for that, that's not gonna cover it. So it's gonna depend on the type of easement that is being granted, essentially the type of access that is envisioned. And that's gonna depend on the agreement of the parties involved, whether the coun, the council will use that as, this is a city interested project or it's not, is, is really a council. But it's, it's gonna depend on what the, the access being agreed to.
Cause I think that areas are, Justin, that we're talking about, for an easement alongside that guy's property land, it'll take quite a bit of fill and get that up to where it should be.
It definitely is gonna take some fill, yes.
Well, council, should we wait and see what happens after Justin, he took this person on Friday, so we got more, we have to go on to see where we're at?
We'll have to wait.
To see what this property owner thinks and what he's got to say and, and that stuff. What do you say, Barb?
I think that a representative, like I asked before, of some of the homeowners, a representative from the city council and Justin should meet with this guy and just see what they come up with, you know, explain to him, he probably has more questions than.
That's all we got.
Mm-hmm. Explain to him the situation and see if there is some kind of light there for, well, something to be worked out.
Do you have somebody from the council, Lloyd, who's there?
Well, I would imagine that Lloyd would like to be there, but if you can't, no, I'll be there. I can also be there, unless somebody else wants to, I think we, we can't have three of us, so unless you want to be there, Lloyd.
No, I was out there and looked at, if we can, and see that's why I asked Justin about, it's gonna have to be filled all in there and stuff in order to make an easement to get back into that spot. So if you two wanna go, we'll find.
One thing I wanna ask, is there an easement down, Sean, you know, like we traveled on that property to go back there to clean that out, put that extended cove in there. Do we have, was that on our easement or don't we have easement?
There is drainage easement, there is.
There is a drainage.
Drainage and utility easement.
That's different.
So now we just put that on hold until you guys meet and see what this property owner agrees on, to see what we can come up with. What a motion for that, Barb.
Do you want to put this on the next agenda? So I have Justin, Lloyd, Mark, and the property owners.
Need a voter on that then, or?
Yeah.
Okay. And we'll move on to school, road, crossing.
As a follow-up to the last meeting, I reviewed the school crosswalk across County Road twelve right at Second Street South. And there's an existing crosswalk that is painted across the County Road twelve there. There is two existing signs on the crosswalk, one facing each direction. It is a properly signed for school crosswalk. There's a different sign for school crosswalk versus a standard crosswalk. The standard crosswalk is one individual person on the side and then the school crosswalk is, is two people. That's a minor difference between the two signs that most people don't probably notice, but it is, it is indicated as a school crosswalk. Anyhow, some items that I noticed that could be added to better, to increase the awareness of the crosswalk. I spoke with the school principal to get his concerns directly. And he was mostly concerned about times of the day where there is not a school crosswalk guard at the crosswalk. And I believe that was from eight fifteen to eight forty-five, if I recall, is when the crosswalk guard is there. And he especially expressed a concern during low light periods like earlier in the morning and now that the time change is taking, well, I guess not now. Now that the time change is taking place later in the, in the afternoon. So a few items that I looked at, first of all, advanced crosswalk signs could be installed. Those are fairly standard, it's optional in accordance with the, the traffic manual policy, but, but they're, they're often times placed. I talked to Wright County about that and they would have no problem installing those and they would actually install those themselves. I think we may have to, I already think we need to do a permit for that, I think let's go ahead and do that themselves. Some other items that, that could be done is Public Works, City Public Works is in charge of painting the crosswalks across County Road twelve, even though it's a county road. That's an item that the city's responsible for, so I think Public Works does that once a year. We could add reflectorized beads to that crosswalk and that, that makes the crosswalk light up a little bit at night when the headlights are flashing on. And that's a fairly low cost item, we just need to, need to find suppliers for the glass beads. And then other items that could be done, the word school could actually be painted on the, on the street as well in advance of the crosswalk. And that would make it a little bit more prominent that it is a school crosswalk. And that was one of the items that the principal was concerned about as well.
Did you, did the glass bead, beads in the school too?
Yes.
The cost of the council, less than a hundred dollars?
Yeah, I, I made a, a call to a painting contractor and he didn't return my phone call, but I had asked last week, I had, had asked him for a cost for that and, and I'm just speculating it'd be a, in the ballpark of a thousand dollars and he may or maybe won't have to do that every year, I think. Sean, you, you paint crosswalks every year, is that right?
Crosswalk paint is very expensive, but I've never put glass beads, so I'd have to do some research on that, I don't know, no clue. But our, our crosswalk paint is very expensive.
If, if, it would be, I don't know what the cost would be, you would have to get a template, you know, there's a, a school stencil, so the city doesn't have one of those. We could maybe look at purchasing one of those and see how much that would cost for someone to do it every year.
Would another school deal have that though? We could probably borrow one or something.
There'd be other cities that have, I don't know if they have or not.
We'd certainly look into it, Lloyd, I, I don't know what they cost or even if they.
As far as they would last, we could have it for years.
Yeah.
I guess I know you have a lot of these signs down the state going all the time.
Well, yeah, the last item there was the solar powered, uh, lighted crosswalk signs and that's kind of a, you know, that's a, well, that's sort of low to high cost, I guess you might say. And, um, they actually have, there is one installed, uh, up in Buffalo at the Northwoods Elementary School up there, County Road twelve. Uh, so if you wanted to go look at one, you can certainly go look at one up there.
The only reason I'm asking you this because, I don't know, one oh seven and County Road eight, they're pulling them out of there. And County Road nine and one oh seven, they're pulling them out of there because they're not working all the time. They're gonna install some new kind of lights on these roads up there because they're not flashing all the time, they're not working. That's the only reason I'm asking you this.
As far as I know, I talked with the county and they said they haven't had any issues with the one up in Buffalo County as well.
Well, not Buffalo, I mean on these county roads.
I don't know about the ones you're specifically asking.
I just don't like what the county commissioner, what I talked to Charlie, that, with these signs that they're pulling.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, the limited research that I've done on these, we were looking at, not these specifically, we were looking at digital uh, speed limit signs a month ago or so. And a lot of these manufacturers that make these signs are in the southern part of the states. And they're not very cold weather tolerant. And failures will happen when you get down to ten degrees, the batteries will not survive. And spending five grand on a lighted sign that doesn't work is not very cost effective.
Thank you. So they don't, they don't work very, they stop with all that.
This company is on Wisconsin, so.
Our solar light part is designed for cold weather.
Yeah, their, our solar light out there is actually designed, they use in Canada and everywhere else.
So does that same company design these things?
I don't recall seeing it, no.
I know we gotta have something to improve the crosswalk so the kids can get across, so nobody's gonna get hurt.
Justin, did you say it was the, the same company that had to sign up under the school in Buffalo?
Ah, it is, yes.
It is? And how long has that been there?
I do not know for sure.
Well, yeah, if the sign has been there for a couple of years, it'd be nice to know and, you know, how it's working in the winter.
I'd like to do some more checking on that and do some more calling around, being that they have used these, like, I haven't really checked even internally in our company how much anybody's had experience with these, so it's not as an option at this time.
So roughly at the cost of approximately a thousand dollars, we could improve the, the crosswalk at Second Street in Buffalo Avenue? For an estimation?
The top three items, yeah.
Yeah.
I think it looks, uh, more than that.
No.
Yeah. That just includes the word school, the glass beads.
Glass beads and the paint and the, and the stencil for the school.
Can you paint that this time, here, Sean?
You can try, I promise you. Five gallon fails, roughly five hundred bucks, so.
So you think that five gallon fail would do the word school if it's?
Hmm, being it's the first time, I would be, yeah, I wouldn't, I wouldn't say that it would.
So we're probably looking more than a thousand dollars to be easy.
To be comfortable, yes. But it's still a minimal investment to protect the kids or try to, anyway.
Maybe we would probably be under fifteen hundred.
I gotta look to see what a stencil costs, I don't know. If there's certain, I had a stencil like on a road for the word school or if I could paint one or. Certainly not to the size of.
I don't think it'd be done this year, really. The weather drops.
I would, I would say during this time of year.
It's gonna be covered by school.
It's gonna be scraped off.
Yeah. Um, Justin, when did the county say that they could have these signs put up? Did they give a time or?
They didn't give me a specific time, but they, it sounded like they could get that done this year.
And we do also have the signage going back on that property of Second Street in Buffalo Avenue stating that the school is there, so that's added to two. So if you could check and to see what a template and paint would cost, cause I don't presume you gave any benefits for anyone at the actual school put down there, and bring it back to the next December meeting.
Certainly.
You want me to go ahead and have the county's signs up there soon?
Yes.
And then will you also check on the, on the tapco sign that's at the Buffalo School for how long it's been in service and if there are any issues?
Do we need a motion to that, Phil?
With her.
Alright. Um, I would make a motion now, Sean, to look into the cost of paint and template for the word school to be put into the crosswalk of Second Street in Buffalo Avenue. And along with that, to have Justin proceed with getting the county to get the signs up on the county board's.
I'll second that.
And direct them to check the.
The tapco.
The tapco sign, how long it's been in service in Buffalo.
At Northwoods School.
Motion by Michelle, second by Lloyd, to check on the crosswalk sign and how long it's been, oh, go for it, paint the crosswalk. Lloyd, do you vote?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
All right, motion carried by Lloyd. Okay, new business, canvassing board, November tenth at ten a.m.
After canvass the city election results, it's like a five minute meeting, you know, the council meets, they approve the election results and. So ten o'clock, ten City Hall.
November tenth.
So Monday, connects, next Monday, you'll be coming to.
Yeah, that'll work.
Okay, and then we got, uh, December twenty-second in the city council meeting.
That's a present, Mr. Speaker, I figure we probably won't need this.
Make a motion in the council, December twenty-second meeting?
I'll second that. Motion by Michelle, second by Lloyd, the council, December twenty-second, council meeting. Johnson, I vote.
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
And a motion carried by Lloyd. Mr. Thorpe, we don't have nothing. Yes, we have technology, Martin, Days, Nicole, Hernandez, the Angel Foundation for holding, Ellen and Costin Party. And Montrose Live for passing out showings.
Um, I will, I wanna acknowledge the Music Candidates Committee for holding the Music Candidates Forum. Amory Chuck and Trailer for bringing their business into Montreal.
I would like to acknowledge Barbara Joanna for arranging and making arrangements for everybody to be in the planning and zoning meeting tonight earlier. So that we could, uh, go ahead and grant them the judicial use permit. Thank you for doing that.
Anybody else?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Aye.
Okay, by Ben, second by Michelle, adjourn, everybody in favor?
Aye.